All right, it is 6:30. We'll go ahead and call them into order. I'll apologize right off that. If anybody that's looking at the video, if I'm not loud enough, I got a little bit of a sore throat. I'll do my best. So our second agenda item is all the comments. So we've got 15 minutes. If you've got something you'd like to contribute, come right up to the mic, give us your name, and it's open.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Carrie Dean, I have just a couple of things tonight. First thing being, as it's funny, Andy mentioned it, the video. There's been some issues. I know you guys are aware of them, but they're... First of all, it's very hard to hear even if you can get into the video, but when you try to watch the video on YouTube, there's multiple meetings that are missing from the YouTube page, obviously because you guys are having difficulties. So I know a lot of people, well, maybe not a lot of people. I rely on those videos when I can't come in to actually physically be here, so hopefully we can get those kinks worked out. The second thing is something that you guys have kind of heard me say throughout the years. I know that we are under a contract with Dale Transportation, but I would very, very highly encourage us to reach out and get some bids from some other bus companies. We've had some consistent issues with them, and I was provided some information over the weekend about a recent incident that happened with a bus driver, a bus driver who drives my children, my child, and I am not happy with what I was informed of. And it's not hearsay, it is the truth. I will not disparage anybody by using names, but I know that Patty, you were recently just made aware of it, and it's not right. And I really hope that there is some repercussions for what happened. So I will leave it at that, but I really encourage us to reach outside of Dale for our busing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, we'll go on to agenda item number three, agenda review. I don't think I have anything as far as arrangement or anything like that. Do you have anything to add? Any board members have anything to add? Okay. Then moving on to number four, we've got two meetings worth of minutes. So does anybody want to make a motion on November 1st?
We were talking about the Chromebooks and then putting money aside for touchscreens, and it says they're currently going for approximately $5,000. Is that talking about the Chromebooks, the touchscreens? I just had a question as I was... Okay, can you just clarify that? And were we looking at how many are in the budget for that? It was unclear when I went back. And then page seven, the new PE teacher at Hill School says auditor supplies. Is that correct? Okay, and then getting new equipment, so that... To change that, that the supplies were audited instead of auditor. Other than that, they look great.
Okay.
I move to approve the minutes as amended.
A second.
Second.
Any other comments, questions, discussion? Okay, all in favor approving the November 1st meeting minutes as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, and we also have November 15.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion of corrections on those ones? Okay, seeing none. All in favor of approving the November 15 minutes as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed and abstentions? Fantastic. Okay, that brings us to agenda item number five, which is our board reports. So we have a student senate representative here. Dr. Morris, you want to make an introduction?
Yes, thank you. So our school goals at Pembroke Academy are to work hard, be respectful, and be a Spartan. I think Jake DeMers, our student representative from student senate, embodies all three of those. This is his first time coming, and that is largely because he's involved in so many things at school. In fact, the last meeting, he politely requested to not be in attendance because he wanted to go cheer on the girls soccer team at the championship game or the semifinal game. So anyway, Jake DeMers.
Hi, I'm Jake DeMers. So I guess I'll be talking about a few things that we're doing in student senate. So most recently, if you're not already aware, we have a big thing in February, and we are, we basically were choosing the theme for our, like our carnival that we do during February. So there was a variety of themes. Basically, what we did was we sent out like the top themes that our senate came up with, and then we sent it out to the school. And based on those responses, we then made a decision today, and we will announce it tomorrow. So our main decision just was to make sure that all of the themes that we were choosing were, you know, respectful, whether it come down to like just the specific things themselves, or we just wanted to make sure everything would be something that people would be okay with. And the theme that we decided on was mythical creatures. So the seniors will be serpents, the juniors will be kraken, sophomores will be dragons, and then the freshmen will be yeti. And then some recent things we've done in the past, we did, we usually have a thing where we hang up every student and teacher's name around the school. So we did that. So we usually cut out turkeys and leaves and a variety of things, like to the fall theme, true to the fall theme. And we basically cut those out, and then we handwrote each and every student and teacher's name. It's just kind of like a tradition that we do on senate, and it's something I personally enjoy doing. As, like, just in regards to the club, we've just been focused on winter carnival, but we, like, we've been breaking up into groups and just brainstorming ideas of things like upcoming. So, but right now, our main focus was to choose the themes for winter carnival, so we've dedicated the last few meetings to that. And then prior to that, we were just hanging our decorations around the school, so.
Cool. Any questions for Jake? All right, thanks for coming. Good to have somebody back from the student body.
You're welcome.
All right. Do we have Mr. Coughlin tonight? Probably not. Okay. Sure.
We just have a short report from Mr. Coughlin for facilities. PA and Three Rivers were recently inspected for our annual code check by the Pembroke Fire Department. All went well, and Pembroke Hill will be completed soon. The facilities department is excited to support the winter athletic seasons as they hit the ground running and the holiday concert season as it fast approaches. I would also like to thank the facilities crew as they've been hard at work, keeping the schools in great shape, are very committed to the PSD community, and do this all with a positive attitude, and it shows on a daily basis. Thank you, Josh.
All right. Any questions or comments on that? Okay, then we will go to the principals. We will start with this, Gary.
Hello. So we have a lot going on this week in particular. Seems like everything culminated in one week. We are sending out our report cards this week. We've wrapped everything up, started our new trimester. We have an early release on Thursday and then a full day on Friday for our staff to, for parent-teacher conferences. We're really excited about that, getting the chance to face-to-face with everybody. Tomorrow, we have our winter concert here at PA. It'll be K2 starts at 5:30 and 34 starts at 6:30, if anybody's interested. It's Cuteness Overload. I highly recommend it. They were practicing all day today. You can hear it up and down the halls. Just some things that we're still moving. Academically, we have our next data meeting, and again, that's something that we bring a team together where we review our progress monitoring data at this point, and we ask ourselves some key questions, and one of them is have our students made expected growth. So we look at all of our different benchmarks, we talk about it, and we kind of brainstorm as a team things that we can do. But that particular meeting, the biggest goal is to assign school-wide interventions if needed, so students need to participate in title or anything like that. So I'm excited to see the progress that the kiddos have made and have those conversations. We have one thing I'm really excited about in particular is Thursday and Friday, we will have our pairs in the building, so we're hoping to provide some PD for our pairs. One of our goals is to make sure that they understand even just the student growth and data and stuff like that. So we'll be talking that data with them and then connecting how they can support our school-wide goals with the work that they do with their students. And then I'm sure it is on the agenda for later, but we have had visioning sessions in the building. We just had one recently, and we have another one on Thursday. So it's exciting. The team's been really great, and it's great conversations. I really appreciated the process that they've kind of put us through, and the questions they ask are really thoughtful, and it's stuff that I think we can continue to ask ourselves, and it just helps us grow and define ourselves. So that's been something that's been a great takeaway from that particular process. And I think that's it for us.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments? Okay, I will move to Mr. Marson.
Okay, we have a few things. Our fall production of, I'm gonna get it right, Every Babysitter's Nightmare was a huge success. We did a performance in front of the student body, a couple of them. We had an evening for parents, and that was, as always, Eliza Morris and Cassie Sepeck do a wonderful job of leading our drama club. Once again, it was awesome. We also have teacher conferences coming up this Thursday. Progress reports will be issued soon, once we get through the processes. A little bit of a process to do, but, and that, everybody always looks forward to those, especially to kids, right? We have a game opener tomorrow night for our basketball program, and we just did Experience the Thoughtful Classroom with Harvey Silver that came to the whole SAU, but he joined Three Rivers on Monday, and Patty joined us, and we had an interesting time looking at teachers, and it was really a training for us, to help with evaluations and professional development. I would like to yield my time to some of my friends from Three Rivers, who from student council. They're gonna be okay. You talk all the time down there at school. So they're gonna come up and tell you what they've been up to real quickly. Sounds good.
Hi, I'm Jen Coletti. I'm the art teacher. I do art and kindness club and then also student council. So these are some awesome student council members that took some time out to come tell you what we've been up to.
Can we... Chloe, hold on one second. Can you make sure that the thing on the back of the mic is slid up towards you, the button?
Yeah, it is.
Okay, and then everybody just get like really, really close to the microphone.
Okay. Well, hi, I'm Chloe. There's a bunch of us that's coming to...
I'm Lily.
I'm Olivia.
Hi, I'm Charlotte.
I'm Anna.
So basically, we just wanted to tell you guys what we've been up to. So last month, I think, we had, we sold, yeah, of... So in October, we sold over $1,000 worth of tickets and dance tickets. So we gave $1,000 to Community Action Program at Pembroke, and just some pictures. And in the next couple weeks, we are going to be doing Candygrams again. So this time, it's gonna be like holiday themed, and we're going to have Two Spirit Days, Holiday Hat Days, and Ugly Sweater Contest. So, yeah. Yep. Yeah, so we should be able to raise some money for that, for those workouts, so.
Awesome. Thanks so much for coming. Come back anytime. Yeah, so there's a... Yep. Thanks, Andy. Thank you very much. Any questions for John or for the student council?
The date of the ugly sweater contest?
Thursday, December 22nd.
Are you gonna enter?
Who has an ugly sweater that wasn't able to be worn last year that really needs to be worn this year?
Any other questions?
Can I just thank you guys? I think I heard that you raised all of that money. It was $1,000. And selflessly, instead of keeping that to buy things for you, you gave that to Community Action to help others in the community. Is that what I heard? That's really amazing and really selfless of you, and thank you for doing that.
Okay, we will move on to Dr. Morris.
Okay, good evening. Start by talking about Key Club. Our Key Club ran their Thanksgiving dinner again this year. It's one of the longest-running community service events in the state. Jake, our student representative, was there. I stopped by for a little while and was quickly given some orders to cut ham. I was allowed sharps, which I'm not allowed at home. So, but anyway, you know, for someone who really struggles to feed his own two children, it was really amazing to see Ms. Sally Johnson and Mrs. Danielle French coordinate that kitchen and the students. It was really amazing. They did a great job, and I know a lot of people in the community look forward to attending that every year. And so, anyway, they did an excellent job. The Pembroke Academy Hall of Fame is now accepting nominations. I sent something out earlier this week regarding that, and we will be accepting nominations until March 6th. Last year, we inducted Roy Anis into the Hall of Fame, and as is customary, our convocation ceremony is also our induction ceremony to the Hall of Fame, and so he was our featured speaker for that. And if you know Roy, you know that that was an excellent speech. The Lightning Thief went very well. That was the PA Players Drama production. On a side note, we had three educators from the Pembroke School District who were in the orchestra pit, and one student, Lucas Wing, who, in a related story, plays second in all-state for classical guitar. And he's quite a musician. We have our winter concert on Thursday on December 15th at 7:00, and Mr. Thibodeau asked me to narrate a Christmas tale, Beware of the Krampus. So I rehearsed with the band today, received some feedback, so I have some things to work on. Rebecca Insley is one of our flute players. She also placed fourth in all-state for flute, and she is an excellent musician in her own right. We also did reapply for the Eddies this year. If you remember from last year's process, the Eddies is the School of Excellence for Secondary Education, and even though they don't have a runner-up per se, it was between us and another school, so you can describe that however you want to describe it. But as you remember from last year, they did acknowledge our work in competency-based ed and encouraged us to apply again. And quite honestly, going through that process has really helped us prepare for NIOSC this year, and it, I think, was very helpful for us. And so we're more than willing to do that again this year. Just so you also know, Julia Velato, she is a Pembroke Academy alumnus who was recently hired as a math teacher. She is also an assistant coach for our boys' basketball team. And the Conquer Monitor was here last week to interview her and interview some of her players because we think that she may be the first female assistant coach for boys' basketball in NHIA history. So they're doing a little bit more research on that, but I've been checking the Conquer Monitor. It hasn't been published yet, but that may be coming. One item that I really should talk about is we have had an increase in vandalism in bathrooms, and we have struggled, quite frankly, with how to contend with that. And some of the vandalism has posed some safety risks. We've actually had some of those blow dryers that have been taken off of walls and are kind of hanging by wires. And in one instance, we had an electrical junction box that was opened up. And so what was really important for us is to make sure that we can safely prevent access from those spaces until those things get fixed. So for a temporary measure, I did order some of those. You may remember, they're these closable kind of accordion diamond gates, and we're going to install those so that we can very quickly close off an area, because, you know, these, you know, kind of larger bathrooms don't have doors. And so we've been preventing access to those with duct tape, which is not very effective. So we're going to install those, and hopefully that will help. In tandem with that, we have had an issue with vaping, as every high school has been dealing with. And so we're hoping that in addition to preventing access from spaces that have been vandalized, if we see, if we're seeing that there's increased vaping in certain areas, we can prevent access to that for a little while, too, until we can get that under control. Thank you.
Awesome. Any questions? Congratulations on finally finding something that duct tape isn't good for.
Yeah.
It's important. Okay, so that brings us to SAU/Exec Board. Anything?
At least since my last report, next meeting is December 14th, but I don't know where. Not on the schedule. It might not happen. Okay. Okay. All right. And that's it.
All right. And Melanie, anything on Hill School?
No, we haven't met, and the next one's January 17th at 4:00. And then I think they're planning on a school board presentation here after that meeting.
Great. Okay, and the last one is NBC. There's not a ton to report. I did provide them, you know, the brief update that we got last time, but we haven't started taking a deep look at the school budget yet. I guess the big thing there is, the schedule's a little bit funny this year, just the way that the holiday falls on a weekend. We've always given our initial, like, big presentation with Amber and Patty to them on the last meeting before the holiday. There is no meeting on the 22nd scheduled, and we're not gonna be ready to do that on the 15th. So they, I think I had mentioned before, they asked if we could bring Ms. Gersha in from the SAU office to do a discussion around special ed and how that affects the budget and what pieces mean what. It's something that they used to get, and they would like to see that again. So she's gonna do that, and I'll give them, you know, a brief update on the budget situation. But we're going to, the big presentation will be after the 1st of the year. I can't remember. I think it's January 5th, yeah. There are, I think, at least two more sessions scheduled after that first one, and then there's an extra date that's sort of tentative, like if we need an NBC meeting that Thursday, we will do it. So there should be still plenty of time to go through the process like we always do. And it gives us a little bit more time to prepare, which is nice. Sure. In short, not a lot. Like, we pretty much do our work here, and then I take that information to them, and I bring feedback from them to the board. We're not technically beholden to them in any sort of way, but if they come back and say, you know, "That's ridiculous. We'd really like you to, you know, try to see if you can trim $750,000 out of that," I would bring that feedback to the board, and we would discuss if we want to attempt to do that or not. And then, you know, we'd ask the administration for help. But yeah, I'm kind of just the go-between, so we... Excuse me, we'll decide what our budget is going to be here. And then I try to keep them as informed as possible. So every time we get an updated sheet from Amber, I give that to them. I'll give them the draft of the Warren articles. Everything that I get, I give to them as soon as I can, so that they're, you know, in the loop. And then, but with that said, anytime that you guys want to attend, you're certainly welcome to. Gene's the alternate, he usually comes as well.
That was the question.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think, I mean, you certainly don't have to, and I'm not sure... Probably have to let them know ahead of time if there's gonna be three of us there, right? Meeting requirements? Okay. It's, I mean, it's kind of fun, honestly. I like numbers, but it's more fun, like, leading up to now, because we've been talking about all the different town departments, and there's only one of those meetings left. After that, it's all about the school, which you already know all about. But, you know, for future years, usually like two departments at a time. So they do library early because it's an easy one, but like, you know, the library, public works, water and sewer, fire, ambulance, all those people come in on different nights, present their budgets, present their changes from last year, and it's a nice way to kind of know what's going on around town, what projects are planned and things like that. So if you haven't been to one, I'd encourage it sometime. Anything else on any of the board reports? Oh, I was going to say, Mr. DeMers, I always say this every year, you are welcome to stay for as long as you want, but don't ever feel like you have to. If you get done with your report and you want to jet, we completely understand that this is not the most exciting way to spend a Tuesday night. Okay, so agenda number six is consent. We've got three instead of one.
We do. We have a staff parenting leave request. If there are any questions or comments about that, we would need to do that in non-public, but if no one has questions, that can be taken up in public session.
I'd be happy to move to approve that request.
Okay, does anybody have concerns and want to take it to non-public? Let's get that way. Okay, then all in favor of approving the leave, please say aye.
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 Any opposed or abstentions? All right.
Great, thank you. Next, we have an account transfer request. So some of you probably will recall that any transfer within the budget from line to line that exceeds $1,000, the board has requested us to bring that to you for approval. So Dr. Morris has prepared something asking to transfer some funds in order to cover the doors that he, or the gates that he just spoke to you about. We need to transfer money from one line to the other. So we would ask for a motion for that.
To approve? A second.
I'll second it.
Okay. We've got the document, but does anybody have further questions? Okay, then all in favor of approving the transfer of funds request, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions?
That's two.
The next item is the steamer at Pembroke Academy. And not knowing a whole lot about kitchens, at first I thought, does that clean the dishes? Second, I thought, is that to steam hot dogs? And I was quickly informed that it is the main vessel for all of the cooking and is critically important. And Mr. Coughlin informed me, it would be like having a school without a boiler. So it's apparently very serious. And it's very old, I think, like 40 years old. I think, like, 40 years old. And Denise assured me that she rubs it and talks to it every day. Please don't die. Please don't die. Josh assisted her as a new food service director. She has not always gone out for bids and quotes. So Josh was very helpful in the process and assisted her with that. So we did receive three quotes from Able Restaurant Equipment was $23,320. Hobart was $23,991. And New Hampshire Restaurant Equipment was $23,761. Mr. Coughlin is recommending Able Restaurant Equipment because he knows our kitchens, knows our equipment, and is very reliable with any needs or issues that happen within our kitchen. So he is recommending them, and they are actually the lowest price as well. So my, if the board is willing to approve this request, we would take it out of the budget, probably just overexpend the line for now. And then as we move throughout the year, the board can decide whether or not we want to remove money from the equipment trust, or whether if we, if we're looking like we're going to have a significant amount of surplus, you might want to just cover it with surplus. So right now, we would like to definitely move on purchasing it, and then we can wait till we move along a little more in the year to decide how we're going to fund that.
Okay. Any questions?
I'll move to approve.
Second. All right.
I guess I, not knowing what it is, is more than, you know, anything else. So I mean, if, you know, I, we need it, obviously. So I would vote to approve. But if you could come back with just a overview at some point.
I can read what Mr. Coughlin sent to me. And you can tell me if you need more than that. He said, "It is the machine that cooks everything in bulk, from noodles, turkey, and gravy, ground beef, sauces, et cetera. Literally everything for the main meal district-wide."
Oh, okay.
I guess it's big. Yeah. It's not what I thought.
I heard district-wide, so I was like, all right.
Yeah, the whole district. Yeah.
Any other questions? Does everybody understand what Patty was saying about how it works budgeting-wise, and how we can decide later? Okay. Then all in favor of approving the purchase from Able Restaurant Equipment of a steam boiler, please say aye.
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 Any opposed or abstentions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to gifts and donations, which has a big zero like usual. Sometimes I get excited. So agenda number eight, immediate business. So our first 8A is, we've got an update from Matt Miller and his comrades at the Pembroke Community Power Group.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for having us tonight. We're here on behalf of the Pembroke Energy Committee, kind of serving as the Pembroke Community Power Committee as well, just to give you kind of an update on what we've been up to regarding our community power program. So we're going to quick start with a refresher on community power for those who may not know. So community power programs pool or aggregate the demands of customers in a community like Pembroke, and purchase electric power on behalf of those customers, with the goal of reducing costs, providing more access for renewables, and other new innovations that are fast coming. We had a presentation, but there's no means to present it. So actually, if possible, we'd like to send it. I don't know if we could append that to the meeting minutes, so everyone can kind of see it. So our agenda, we're going to quickly run through kind of what community power is, talk about our main activities. Since our last update, we visited with you probably about half a year ago now. So we've been doing quite a bit around the community that we'd like to catch you up on, talk about some of our next steps, and just kind of have an open discussion if there's any questions or feedback. So there's a really nice graphic in here, which I won't try to describe via words, basically comparing the existing options for electric power procurement that are currently available. Yeah, sorry. I don't know if I'm loud enough. All right. How's that? A little better? All right. Actually, I might, I might take this so I can. Yeah. I'm antsy. I can't stand still. So, so basically, we're going to try to pool together all of the electric demand of our town and purchase it at a lower rate, and also increase our renewable content. This will also give us quite a bit of opportunities to source our power locally. So we're not buying it out of state. We could buy it here in town. We can buy it from the new solar farm that's going in across the street, things like that, that are not currently available to the town. One very key point is that the distribution of all that electricity will still be through Eversource. So Eversource will continue to be responsible for all of the wires, poles, substations, distribution stations, all of that. When your power goes out, they're the ones that are responsible for it. It's not the town. We are just looking to change the half of your bill. It's more than half cost-wise now, but the half of your bill that is the supply portion. Eversource will continue to deliver all that load to your doorstep. Some of the benefits of this are, it can provide access to more affordable rates. We can get more access to green power options, and you can have the option to increase or decrease your renewable content based on your personal desire. And as more innovations come in, like time-of-use rates, we'll be able to take advantage of that and not be beholden to Eversource and what types of programs they plan to roll out. So the main benefit is lower cost. So everyone's supply rate just recently went up. A new cycle in a couple months here, rates will be set, and we'll, we'll see where the rates go from there. But our electricity grid here in New England is highly dependent on natural gas, which is traded on the worldwide scale. So we are very susceptible to the market fluctuations globally. And based on everything that's going on now, natural gas is in high demand, which has driven up our electricity rates big time. So looking at other sources of local energy, like renewables, will do a lot to help stabilize and reduce the volatility of our electricity rates here in town. Will also give us a little bit more resiliency, because we're not beholden to the global, the global markets. So the, the lower cost portion is the primary driver. We have an electric aggregation plan, which Matt will go through in a minute. Right in that plan states our program will only launch if we're initially able to offer lower rates than Eversource. So that is a baseline contingency on this program launching at all. And based on other states that have had community power programs for decades now, the lower cost component has proven to be consistent across these states. So we're, we're highly confident that that will be a benefit to the community. Just to quick wrap up on a few key points. So Eversource will continue to deliver the power. This is only the supply portion of the bill. This will all be authorized by the Board of Selectmen. So this will ultimately be voted on in the town meeting. Then the Board of Selectmen will be authorized to contract all the necessary professional services that will be required to launch the program and maintain it over the long run. And the participation in this program is voluntary. So we will have an enrollment mechanism, whether it's opt-in or opt-out. The Energy Committee is strongly recommending an opt-out. So the majority of the town gets the benefit of this program. But at any point in time, if someone wants to leave, they can leave. They just give a written notice. And if they wanted to then join again, they could. So that's it. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for your time. So I'm Matt Miller, again, just to remind you. And what I'm going to just talk about is the activities that we've been doing recently to make sure that we meet the requirements of creating a community power aggregation, and that we've been going through the mechanics of enabling that. So it's kind of in bullet form, there's three main areas of activity. So one is on community awareness. What, what are we doing to try to make sure people are familiar with the, the activity and, and learn about it? So we've, we have put together a community aggregation, or a community power plan, or it's also known as an energy aggregation plan. That's on the town website now. So if you go to Pembroke Town Hall and look under Government, find Energy Committee, and click that link, you'll find, you'll get access to that draft document. We've also conducted two public meetings in the auditorium here in the school, where we talked about that plan, described it to people, had conversations and discussion about it. Those meetings were held on October 5th and November 1st. We had an energy survey. There was 169 respondents. There was a booth at Old Home Days where you two guys spent the whole day talking to people about it. We've given various select board updates. And the next select board update we'll be giving is actually December 21st. And during that meeting, we will be going through our draft warrant article. And so the, the key message I've got is, this whole thing will go to town vote in the March town meeting. So hopefully, if you're there, you can, you know, you can vote and weigh in on it. I have a draft of the warrant article here that we'll be discussing with them. I won't post it up here. But I, if you're interested, I'll, I'll leave this whole little slide set. You can rifle through it, and we'll get you an electronic copy. So those are two of the main activities that we've been working on. And then the, the third thing is, is our engagement with this organization called the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire. And this is an association or coalition of about 23 or four towns in New Hampshire that are interested in doing the same thing. And they've basically come together to share resources and get access to stuff. I'm, I'm the chair of the Risk Management Committee of that coalition. And what we do is we try to figure out, how do you manage the, the financial and energy security risks of all the towns that are trying to procure power? So one of the things that we did over the summer is we ran a, a request for proposal for all the services required to be a power agency. And the outcome of that is that we've awarded contracts. We're, we're in the process of signing contracts with four or five service providers. One is a company called Calpine. They will do all the customer service. It means calculation of bills, invoicing, customer data collection and, and management, call center, website, all that kind of stuff. There's another company called Ascend Analytics that will actually do the energy portfolio management, meaning they'll try to understand the, the demands of the customers, that the electric demand, the load prediction. They'll study the markets. They'll decide when it makes sense to go into the market to buy either physical positions of power, or take future contracts to, you know, try to manage some volatility. There's another company called River City Bank that will provide certain financial services to enable transactions and, you know, safeguard the, all the financial parts. And then there's a, a group called Clean Energy New Hampshire, which will be providing some local program support. They'll be doing things to help towns that want to basically follow certain energy initiatives, whether it's development of local generation, or conservation activities, or whatever else. Just basically help communities with local programs and so forth. And then there's some accounting services that we haven't yet awarded, but we're, it's fairly basic stuff. And then the final thing that, that we've been doing, Pembroke, when I say we, I mean, Pembroke has been engaged with this coalition for, is to develop the policies for the procurement and rate setting and so forth of electric power. So there are, there are three policies. One is called Energy Portfolio Risk Management. There's another called a Rate Setting Policy, and then a third called a Financial Reserve Policy. And as you can imagine, anytime you're dealing with money and things like that, you have to have in, in place pretty good standards and safeguards and oversight and governance and separation of, you know, power conflicts of interest issues that are, that are taken into account. So we've been doing a lot of that. As a matter of fact, on December 8th, our next Budget Committee meeting, I'll be at another meeting, running a, a public deliberation on those policies in Dover. But that, that's a quick summary of the activities that we've been doing. And the bottom line is that, from the mechanics of how this will all come together, it's, it will be enabled. There's very strong service providers that have been selected and that are, that are going to enable this type of thing. We have a warrant article that we'll review with the Select Board. And, you know, they, I'm sure they've got some input, and they'll, they'll give us some feedback. But that should be on the, on the ballot for town vote. And hopefully, we just have enough awareness, you know, between now and, and March, that we can have a good discussion and then a good, a good vote on that. So that's all I've got for you. And if you, there's any questions, Richard, I, or Pinty, are happy to answer anything.
I've got a couple. But anybody else? Questions? First one, just, how do you feel like it's going as far as turnout? Like, I haven't been able to come to the meetings, because they're usually the same time as ours. So are you getting a decent number of people?
Yeah. So the first meeting on October 5th, it was 14 people, not including the committee. And then the second meeting was 21 people.
Okay.
Yeah. And, yeah.
And just curious, with a warrant in March, let's assume it passes, what, what kind of timeframe are you looking at that this actually gets off the ground?
Yeah. That, so there's, there's a big range of what it could be. If, if we do certain things very aggressively, meaning we submit documents to the Public Utility Commission and do everything assuming a certain outcome, we could probably be ready to launch as early as April or May. But if we don't do that, and, and I don't think there's, well, I'm, I'm open. But, you know, if, if we take it kind of at a, at a normal pace, it would probably be in the next year. It would probably be about a one-year lag. But, but so that's the range of the spectrum. And that, that's some of the discussions that we can have. And we know how to do it quickly. But there are a lot of, there are a lot of steps you have to do regulatory-wise. And then there's, for every one of those steps, there's a, you know, a minimum of a certain number of days that you have to wait, or a certain amount of time you have to wait to get feedback. So we just have to decide when to start that process.
Gotcha. Okay. So, I mean, as far as overlap between, between the Year Committee and the school, I mean, first of all, I appreciate you guys coming a couple times a year to get, you know, give us an update of what's going on, because, you know, obviously, school's part of the town. It also puts your message out there a little bit for the 10 people that watch this meeting at home later.
But, so one interesting thing, I did see in the, in the budget, you guys would know better than me, but apparently your electric, annual electric bill's around $165,000. So it's a significant, significant.
Yeah. And so the other piece, I think, where there's some, a little bit more overlap is, I think you do have somebody that's on your committee that's also on the Hill School Renovation Committee? Is that right?
Yes. Jackie. Yeah, Jackie.
So, you know, who knows what might be will come of that. But I, I think the general consensus of the board has been that, you know, if we can make good energy choices, that's something that we're interested in with that project. So it's good that you guys have somebody on that, on that committee.
Right.
Awesome. And if there's any, anything that we can ever do, you know, to assist or, or whatever, please let us know.
Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
So just one quick thing. The outreach component of this whole process has been our biggest challenge. So we inadvertently scheduled both of our public meetings at the exact same time as school board meetings, unfortunately. We're required to have two of them. We're probably going to hold more between now and March to try to get more engagement. They're really great for us. Maybe that's just our perspective on it. But there's a lot of really engaging discussion that happens at those events. If we have another one, keep your eyes open. Please come to it if you can, if you can. But at any rate, please share this with any neighbors, family, anybody in town. This is only going to be successful if it's accepted within the community. And really, the more involvement we get, the better it's going to be for the community. So help us spread the word, if you could, please. Thanks.
Thank you guys for coming. Appreciate it. Any questions? More? Anything else? Okay. Then we'll move on to 8B, which is budget.
We have several things to review under the budget this evening. I would like to start with the good news, which is Clint Hanson came to my office with an envelope and said, "I have money for you." And that never happens. So we did receive the check. Pace is completely closed out. All their books are closed. And after everything was paid and the building was sold, we have a check for $86,692.53. So that will be recorded as miscellaneous revenue for the district and will help to offset taxes. So that's the good news part of our financials. Did you have a question?
See if it's the same as mine.
Will that specifically be identified at the deliberative session? I, I just, I think that that's been a, a question. I think it could be.
I mean, Andy does the presentation.
Reminder, I can certainly point that out.
I just think it would be good for people to know that there was money that came.
So can I clarify that? So can I clarify that, Patty? So we received it now, so it will go into the current year budget?
Correct.
And so that'll show up?
Next year. Yep, next fall. Yeah, because we've already closed books tax rate set. So this will get deposited and then help our surplus at the end of the year to offset. Okay. Other items under budget, we have warrant, draft warrant articles for you. We have some changes in the budget to review and then some work that the administration did this morning that we wanted to discuss with you. So let's start by reviewing the changes in the budget. So you have a booklet. Our stapler is broken. Your pamphlet is a little funky. Hopefully it's, stays together for you. Amber gave me a summary, so that will help us as we walk through. So some of the changes in this revised budget packet were changes in teacher salary lines in both regular ed and special ed. We added some pooled increases for staff. The food service budget pooled increases were included. And there was a change in special ed transportation. So if you go to page three, lines 15 and 16, there was a change in teacher salaries. That was a change to Masters 5 and retirement. So I think last time they were accidentally budgeted for a Bachelor Step 5, then we always budget for a Master Step 5. So Amber adjusted that. On page 13, line 376, we removed a position that had been added previously. And then there's another change, staff change that we'll discuss later on in the meeting. On page 43, line 1376, there was a change in special ed transportation from the last meeting. And on page 44, we did put some requests that we're going to discuss later on into the budget, which changed. We needed to adjust health plans in some of those lines and then the related fringes that go along with that. So when you have a expected retirement, we budget a certain salary and then we adjust the other lines accordingly. So that's in the budget, assuming that you'll be approving your requests later on in the, in the meeting. And then lines 1456 to 1464, we did, we've been having conversations specifically about our food service and facilities workers and trying to move their salaries up to a more livable and competitive wage. So we did do a pooled increase. You'll need to have that conversation. We'll talk a little bit more in detail in non-public, but for the public portion, for informational purposes, we are trying to increase, our proposal to the board is to increase facilities and food services starting wage to $15 an hour. And other districts are doing the same. And that's a little tricky because you have people who have been here. So when you start someone at $15 an hour and you're kind of bumping up against someone that's almost there that has been here, we made, I think we'll wait until the fall. So what, or until the spring, whatever amount that the board settles on, we, it goes in as a pool. And then when we do contracts, we'll sit down with both Josh and the Food Service Director to figure out how to adjust everybody fairly. But we're trying to get that starting rate up so that we can be competitive. We have openings that we're having a hard time filling. So that's the overall summary of what we've done since the last meeting in the budget itself. Does that all make sense to this point? I think we'll wait for the warrant articles and the trust funds. And next we can move into, we, I know we didn't really get a lot of feedback yet because you just saw the budget for the first time over the past two meetings. But seeing the increase and knowing that we were proposing a new teacher contract, the administration felt that we needed to sit down and do some work and hopefully bring a proposal to you that would help lower the bottom line if you so choose. We did a similar spreadsheet for you last year. And what we did was tried to go in and identify areas that at least we felt like we could level fund is where we started from and came up with alternative ways to fund those things. So these are just our suggestions. We'll ask the board to take a look. And if you want us to put these into the budget and you can look at the new bottom line at the next meeting, we can certainly do that. So this is the only piece that's in the budget right now is the first section. And there's a, the first line and there's a note because we already took the position out. So it's not calculated in the formula, but it is a cut because it was already made in the budget. So as you go through things like substitute salaries, we just tried to level fund those and hope that we don't have to hire long-term subs like we have in the past. Some of the infrastructure items, we took out and recommended either using our technology trust that we've been building up or using surplus for that. We cut some of the books, thinking that we could use the instructional materials trust if we need to. A lot of times we get to the end of the year and we're very fortunate. We do our best throughout the year that we have enough funds to cover these things. So we're trying to, you know, the, the budget committee asks us to, to think about the fact that we return money every year. So we're trying to do that and come up with ways to, to cut the budget, knowing that we can probably still fund these items.
Can I interrupt you for a second?
Yeah, absolutely.
I have a clarifying question.
Sure.
It's gonna, it's gonna matter to me anyway.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the bottom line on the budget.
Yes.
Going back to the book.
Yep.
And there's two, there's two bottom lines.
Yep.
And there's a sort of a note. So just for anybody listening, the percentage increase currently, tentatively says with the warrant article transferred to trust, 2.51%, and without that, 4.16%. I know Amber recently filled in some numbers for the tax impact sheet. Do you know which one of those? I guess what I'm trying to figure out is when we're looking at cutting, which one of those is the starting point that we're at right now?
Well, the reason that she talks about without the warrant articles is until we go through those warrant articles and decide whether or not you're going to fund some of the trust funds, that number stays low. So as soon as you start filling in, it, it increases. And you haven't done that yet. So I think she's.
I'm gonna assume the high number.
Yes. She's trying to point out, well, you would assume the high number because that's the number that you chose to fund last year in the warrant article. So if you do similar funding, then it will equal out.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. So you can just look through the spreadsheet. It starts with Pembroke Academy. Again, some of the books, replacement equipment and replacement furniture, new music equipment, a lot of it level funded and hoping to again, take from either trust funds in some cases. And in one case, or a few cases at Pembroke Academy, you see in gray, it just says cut. That's a straight cut that we would just propose eliminating from the budget. And then moving on to Three Rivers, or actually let me stop you at the bottom of Pembroke Hill School. You'll notice in each of our schools, we actually, including Pembroke Academy at the very end, we're proposing taking a total of $100,000 out of special education, which we've done for two or three years in a row now. And we've never had to go to the trust for it. So we've always been able to cover that with surplus. But the, the special education numbers are really high this year. So we're taking, I think, $25,000 each from Hill and Three Rivers and $50,000 from Pembroke Academy. We just chose a line, a random line to make that cut. And we've been reliant on the fact that we have a trust fund that we can go to if we need to, but we haven't had to touch that special trust fund. So that's a recommendation to do that again this year. So that's one of the outliers in that. The rest is typically supplies and books and literacy. And then again, in each school, you'll see the infrastructure funds that are cut and proposed for either the tech trust or from surplus. And then Three Rivers, again, some of them are grayed out and some of them are just straight cuts. It's pretty self-explanatory and all from similar categories. At the very end, we met, Josh came up and met with us this morning and we asked him for a breakdown, his project line and the budget didn't have costs associated with it. So it was just a, a large project line. And we wanted to know, you know, what were we getting for that money and talk about the different things that we might be able to have alternative funding for. So the 115 at PA for facilities projects, it is broken down. There were camera switches, vape sensors, repointing buildings, tree removal, AC replacements, countertop replacements. The camera switches, he felt could use the trust. We had a conversation about the vape sensors. And while we have a serious vaping issue, those sensors are $30,000. So that's something the board is going to have to discuss. We did put it in as a cut from the budget, considering how much the bottom line is up this year. We thought this might not be the year to do that. The, and the rest was proposal from surplus. And then the facilities project at Three Rivers was $25,600. And again, camera switch moved to the trust. Tree removal will be surplus for $5,000 if we have that at the end of the year. Kitchen access points, I'm going to go over the grant with you. We've got some grant funding to cover some, some safety items. And then picnic tables for $5,000 at Three Rivers, we would purchase if we had enough in surplus at the end of the year. And then facilities projects at Hill School was $42,500. Again, the camera switches to the trust. There was a fence for $20,000 that we would wait till the end of the year to talk about. Walkies for $5,000 to talk about at the end of the year. Keypad access points, we have a grant for that. And then outlets in the server room to cut. Josh felt that he could fund those in another way. So that grand total is $442,026 that if the board looks at this and likes the approach that we've taken, we could cut from the bottom line and try to fund these with alternative sources. Do you want to stop and ask any questions or talk about this at this point?
I was going to ask if there's questions, but I think we'll, you know, digest this too. We're not going to make any decisions tonight. But if there's questions, certainly go ahead.
Of cuts? So I guess, any initial thoughts since we're running up against finishing the budget? Is this something that you would want us to put these cuts in the budget to see what the bottom line looks like? And then add some back in if you so choose? Or do you want us to completely leave all of this out and wait until the next meeting?
I've got thoughts, but everybody else can go first.
Are we asking questions online that we?
Sure.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. When it says completely cut, like at TRS, I'm looking at TRS.
Yep.
An intervention kit. And I'm a little hesitant about taking nursing supplies away and a little bit hesitant to take anything away from graduation.
John, do you want to answer how your, what your thoughts are on those? Good question.
Well, the intervention kit is, there's a number of them. I may not answer the greatest that I possibly can because I'm not a complete expert in intervention kits. But it's really getting reading and math supplies that are at a level that you feel some of the kids need and get supported for. We have, frankly, have some significant areas in need. And so we looked into these intervention kits. They come with a bunch of books and, and supplies for staff. While I'm cutting this, we found another option. We actually spoke with Jessica Bickford and she found some grant money. And so we are going to get another option. Actually, we can do that currently. So that is not going to be pushed out. It's going to be replaced with something else that we can do currently through grant money.
I'll update the sheet and put grant in parentheses just so it's clear that we're still getting those. Yeah, thanks. Good question.
Intervention kit, I was thinking like fibulators, like medical intervention. So that's, okay.
No, we've, we have a number of kids that are reading, specifically reading the math that are significantly below. And this would help support that basically. But we did find another avenue to do that. Our graduate, we don't spend a lot of money on that anymore. One of the reasons that we did have that money, we used to do it outside at Three Rivers. We now just come up to PA. And so we don't have any, hardly any expenses that, you know, we might buy pizza for the kids and we may pay for a sound person. But other than that, we don't really have those same expenses. What was the other one? Nursing supplies. Well, I, I look back at our track record and actually I just spoke with them, you know, today, we have not been spending that amount of money over the course of, over the last few years. So I felt like.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. We just want to point out too, we still have Essar until 2024. And we put so many supplies and PPE things in that grant that worked.
We have, we have pallets of that stuff.
Josh, Josh went after it.
He went hard.
I think it's also important to point out, and if anybody in the crowd or anybody that might watch the video, when, when we're, because you don't have the sheet in front of you, when it says, we're talking about like a cut, for example, to nursing supplies, that's a cut of what the proposed increase was. So for example, the, the proposed amount for nursing supplies was $1,000. The, the cut sheet says that we do 750 instead. So it's a reduction of $250. It's not getting rid of all the nursing supplies.
That's a good point. Thank you.
Don't have band aids.
We'll be okay.
Others?
Um, I'm generally concerned and not in favor of sort of bidding against ourselves. You know, I assume that the administrative team and the departments and everybody went through a really serious process to put together the original budget and that pretty much everything in there is needed. And so, you know, to then start stripping away things that are needed for our students makes me uncomfortable. So that's sort of like my premise. Understanding though, that, you know, I don't have one and I don't think I know anybody in town that's a taxpayer that has a money tree growing in the backyard. There are some practical realities to be considered. I think what I would want to see is definitely tapping into the trusts that we have and planning for surplus expenditures as a worst-case scenario if we need to, because sort of the MBC says so, and then we agree. The, the grayed out cells where it's just cutting, I'm uncomfortable with those. And I would only be comfortable with those if those were updated with a comment such as like what was just discussed here. You know, cut because, you know, alternative found, which is funded, you know, which concurrently be funded, something like that, that tells me, you know, this need, there is a need and it is being met. And I'm really uncomfortable with cutting that additional case manager position for the Pembroke Academy.
Question on that too, because I'm really confused from the last meeting to this meeting of how that's up there. Like I, we were filling a vacant math that was never filled, but now we're proposing cutting that special ed. Like I'm confused.
We, we had added a case manager and knowing how much the special education lines were up, we went back. We've had several meetings and several conversations. You know, Jess Bickford and Karen met with Sarah and she provided justification for the position. And it really comes down to the case managers will have higher caseloads. And, you know, one of our programs is, is at capacity and we need to figure out some scheduling. It's, you know, it's happening district-wide. They felt that the services could be met. It's not ideal, but it's not ideal to have the class sizes that we have in some of the grades. And it's not ideal to have an auditorium half filled with students in a study lab either. So everybody is stretched. And I, it was important for me to get more information because I, I would never take services away from students. Like we need to meet our IP services. So we can meet them. It does, it does make for high caseloads, basically. But we can meet the needs of the students.
Other questions? Comments? Okay, I've got a couple of thoughts. I would love, and maybe it's already done other than that one, but if there are any, any other notes that we can get, like, you know, other funding was found or, I mean, surplus. I mean, surplus and trust is fine. I understand those, but especially for the lines that are cut. If there's another way that we can fund those or if there's grants or whatever, any detail that we can get is fantastic. If I could be jerk and ask, if everybody's okay with it. I would love to see this sorted rather than by school and code. Sorted by sort of the notes field. I would like to see what things are we talking about taking out of the budget, all in one chunk? And then what?
So the cuts in one, surplus in one? Okay.
That would help me with.
Is it possible for us to just get this in native Excel so us Excel lovers can play and sort as we see fit?
Absolutely. It's okay, Jean, you don't have to. You don't have to touch it. I'll email it and you can just ignore it. Or I'll put it in your drive in that format. Yeah, I'll put it in the drive.
I, I only say that because the, you know, if, if I can easily add up the ones that are actual cuts, see what kind of overall impact that is versus the ones that we're just trying to level fund or certainly whatever, that would be helpful. I guess my initial thoughts overall are, I think, I'll have more thoughts once we finish the warrant. Because, you know, I'll say it out loud. I somewhat understand where the MBC is coming from as far as the amount of surplus returned each year, right? And this year it was a million dollars again. So, you know, 442, I'm really comfortable that at the end of the school year next year, we will be able to cover that from surplus. Especially because some of it will come out of trust. But when we start looking at the other warrant articles, you know, we've got one for 7,000, one for 200,000, one for 25,000. So we've got 232,000 coming from surplus already. And that's without the school building capital reserve addition and the technology one. I think technology is usually around like 10, right?
It's been historically, but we need to have that conversation about what we're using that for.
So what I'm getting at is if the cut list plus the warrant articles adds up to $600,000, I, I'm going to feel kind of okay that we can handle that and that we're not actually going to be cutting those things between surplus and trust funds. If those things added up equal 1.1 million, then I've got, you know, I've got concerns that some of this is really going to go away. So I think, I mean, I need some time to digest the whole thing, but my feeling is I got to see the overall number to give a better opinion of, of where I want to go with this.
So I think I'm hearing, don't put it in the budget yet. Send it in Excel, sort it, add more detail, and we'll go from there.
Yeah, because we've, we've got, we've got a little bit of time since we're, since all of our MBC meetings are.
You only have one more, don't you?
We've got one more before.
The 20th of December. Oh, and the third, which doesn't give us any time on a Tuesday to change for Thursday. But I mean, I, historically, if we're, if we're still working on it and letting the MBC know, like we could give them the budget and say we're still in discussion about cuts. I think that would be fine.
I mean, I guess overall, I'm, I'm leaning more towards including this stuff than I ever have in the past. Only because I don't, I think that we'll be able to cover it. And I, I don't think much of it will actually go away. So that's where I'm at initially. Anybody else? Questions, comments, concern?
Can I make a quick comment? I agree with Andy, but I also wanted to say that I agree with Amy. I'm very uncomfortable with the special ed case manager at PA because there was obviously a need for it. And I get it that the kids can be handled, but if we're going to increase their caseload, it only takes one crisis situation. And then that can unravel pretty quickly. So it's only $67,000, I would, I'm with Amy, that I really wouldn't want to see that go away.
And actually, that was just the salary. So I did get the updated number from Amber and it depends on, you know, health insurance could add 25,000 with that. But just, that's the base.
Yeah, and, and I'm right there with you. I mean, and again, I think I need to see the whole picture. But I mean, in a $30 million budget, 75K to take us from, we can probably figure this out to we're going to be okay, seems like a wise investment to me.
I think it's worth noting, my, my sense of the vibe in the educator, educator community. It's like maybe a little burnt out coming off of COVID, you know? And so to, to perpetuate a system of, of setting up our people where they're stretched to the maximum is, you know, not something I'm psyched about getting behind.
To add to that, that one case manager could make a difference between an out of district placement or not.
Right. And you have to replace more money.
Right, and if, if they're stretched thin and they do need to provide more support and they don't have time to do that, yes, agreed. Yep. And I mean, we're trying to present you with options and facts. You guys can make the decisions. Yeah, sure. I neglected to print that little spreadsheet that Ashley did with the grant. Does somebody have it open and can read it? So the, you probably remember, the governor released some, another pool of money for safety. And we put in for the first round and we didn't get it, but they said, don't worry, you're automatically considered for the second round. And we did get awarded, I think that they didn't fund the cameras and they had their own, Homeland Security had their own set of priorities and they went through each school and tried to fund those priorities first and then, oh, thank you. So we didn't get any cameras in our grant, but we did for Pembroke Hill School. And this is, it was called the Public School Infrastructure Fund. For Pembroke Hill School, we were awarded $3,044.29. And that's adding access points to intersecured doors specifically, I think the kitchen, is that right? With the front entrance and keypad entrance. And then Three Rivers School, we were awarded $39,876. And that was keypad entry to the kitchen for direct access for the kitchen staff and also replacing exterior doors. And then at Pembroke Academy, $53,628. And 1,280 of that was to replace kitchen and maintenance keypad entries. And 52,348 was to replace exterior doors. So exterior doors are extremely expensive as you can see. So that's really helpful for us. That just means something we don't have to put in the budget. So Josh did a great job going after those funds and we did farewell. So I wanted you to be aware of that. All right. And then we did prepare a draft warrant for you. And we just sort of modeled it after last year. Leaving the blanks that still need to be filled in. The first item, it's number two, is the budget. So that is blank at this point. The votes are all blank. Number three is going to be your collective bargaining agreement. So we, those numbers are blank. We'll need to fill those in once the contract is ratified. Number four gives permission, if the CBA fails, to have one special meeting to discuss cost items only. That's a typical article that's in there when you have a collective bargaining up for renewal. Number five is, so Josh turned in his wish list today. So the things that are populated came from Josh for what he was asking for. He gives his list every year based on his capital improvement plan. So the thing I do need to circle back with him is to find out if they were in order of priority because that matters when you're talking about surplus. I'll just need to circle back with him. But right now, number five is to raise and appropriate $155,000 to be added to the school building capital reserve fund that has been previously established. And then the next one will withdraw because you are not agents to expend. So you can put money in and then he's asking to withdraw $110,000 from that fund, which the voters would also need to approve for the purpose of floor upgrades district wide, roof replacements for part of Pembroke Academy. And again, comes from the school building capital reserve fund. Number seven is blank. Last year, you chose to add an additional amount to the school building capital reserve fund, knowing about all the projects that you have. So you can talk about that and decide if you want to add some money to that from surplus or from taxation, either one.
Can we ask Mr. Coughlin to give us a little blurb about what the need for number seven might be?
To add extra? Yep.
I'm sorry, Patty, I know we had this discussion last year and I just don't remember the details. But I love the sentence in number seven, no amount to be raised from taxation. Because I just think it's super informative to, you know, the average voter. But can you just remind me why that wouldn't go on number six?
So number five is putting money into the capital reserve. And then number six is taking money out of the capital reserve. So there's no reference to taxation at all in that article. Because the money is coming directly from your capital reserve fund.
Okay, I'm, I'm, it's a little late, maybe my brain's just not working. Wouldn't this sentence go to one or the other of five or six?
Not typically, or do you want us to put that in and see if that's okay with DRA? Is that what you're asking?
So five, so five puts money in and seven puts money in. So the difference is on five, we're saying, we're asking the taxpayers for $155,000 to do this. So that is a direct tax, right? In number seven, we're not doing that. We're only funding whatever number we put in there if we have leftover at the end of the year. So that's why, and that, that no amount to be raised from taxation is just DRA language. We used to get in conversations with Dan Crane every single year, but that's the difference.
Thank you for understanding that better than I did. Thank you. That's okay. Number eight, Josh is putting, based upon his replacement cycle to, he's proposing to put $7,000 into that vehicle expendable trust fund. And that he is recommending out of surplus. So again, that phrase of no amount to be raised from taxation. Number nine, he is requesting that $200,000 be added to the site improvement expendable trust fund. And I believe that is half the track that we've been talking about. I think that's what that was. Which is in failure as he shared with you. And then number 10 is to see if you will vote to raise and appropriate up to $25,000 to the equipment installation and labor expendable trust fund. And he is recommending that come from surplus as well. And trying to see if he gave me a description. He did. So he's, the next article withdraws 124. So he's proposing to put in 25 and then withdraw 124,000 from that same trust for camera maintenance, a zero turn mower, phone system at Pembroke Hill and Three Rivers, and intercom replacement district wide. And the phone systems are desperately needed. He reviewed that with you also and the, and the issues that we have with our current phone system and our intercom system. And then the last one, number 12, is blank. And that's for you to have a conversation about your technology expendable trust fund and what you want to do with that. And I think every trust fund is on here except for special ed because you haven't been adding anything to that. It's certainly, we can add it if you decide you want to.
Any questions on the first draft of the warrant?
And then there's this, we included the sheet with your trust fund balances, so you knew where those were currently at.
Any questions on trust fund balances? I'm going to probably make an up, I'm going to update that sheet if I can get the Excel of it and add in the warrant article items, the pluses and the minuses to see what our balances would be after if we approved all of those, just.
You're talking about the trust fund sheet?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
I, I was, I can do it, share it.
Yeah, so just send it to you in Excel.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
I'll make a copy and I'll send it to you guys so you can see what the, what the balance would be if we approved all the additions and subtractions. Now it's in the drive.
I don't, yeah, there's one in the drive. Sorry, I didn't make copies. I have one.
Okay. That was a lot of the budget stuff. Any other questions tonight?
On, just to follow up on one of the things we were talking about. So right now there's five warrants to come from surplus, two are blank. And the total of the three that have numbers filled in is 232,000? Is that, okay.
I didn't add them up, but I'll trust you.
And do we have any sense of the magnitude of those two blanks? I mean, are they usually like four digits, five digits, or six digits?
I think technology has been 10 like every year.
Yeah.
There is a little bit of a conversation around that one, I think. School building one, I don't have a good sense of.
Yeah.
That's why I asked for Josh's clarification because I don't know what, what the ask is.
I mean, that's typically, you know, we've tried to cut back on our warrant articles to keep the budget in a good place. But that's when Josh worries that we start falling behind and, you know, paving projects and those things are high ticket items. So. I'll get his recommendation for you.
I'm good, thanks.
Any others?
Is there anything that you want to change or fill in at this point? You want to take it and digest it?
You know, to me, this, the order seems good. The only issue I might have is if we're going to have a discussion about the technology expendable trust, that means we probably have to increase that amount, which means there's more need, therefore maybe that one should be bumped up higher. That's just my take on it, but ordering, you know, seems to be pretty good at this point in time.
And I, you know, I know the budget committee has, and there are different opinions on the committee, but some of the members have, are from the belief that we should be putting things that we need in our budget and not using trust funds as savings account. That's something that the board has to decide and then you bring it to them and they vote, vote to recommend or not recommend. You know, we certainly are going to have an increased technology replacement cycle based upon all of the devices we've been able to buy with ESSR funds. And then we have some infrastructure things that are in the budget this year for switches and servers. And those are costly items. So it just depends on if you want to keep it in the budget or, or add to your tech trust fund and, and use that.
Right. Yep, and, and I guess something I'll add in the budget process because it comes up every year. The discussion around the surplus and how much is okay and all of that stuff. And I'll say, I, I think I was somewhat misquoted last year at one of our meetings in saying that, that I or we were okay with, you know, figuring 3% high. And I want to clarify, A, that's not Amber's process when she builds this budget. She builds it from scratch every year. And B, I don't want to be misconstrued as I'm aiming to give us a 3% cushion. What I said last year, when I'll repeat now, is I think that when you get to the end of the year, if you've missed by 3%, I think it's a pretty reasonable estimate. If I, you know, had to buy however many lines are in this thing worth of groceries and I figured it up and I said, hey, I think that's going to be about $300 and ended up being $290, I would say that was a damn good estimate. And that's kind of the position that we're in. And in my estimation, if we're, if we're a little bit too much, we're okay and the rules allow for that. If we're a little bit too little, then we have to have a special meeting and we have to go back and ask taxpayers for more money. And my estimation, that looks irresponsible. So I just want to clarify that and it's important for anybody that might be listening to understand that, that if we budget to the penny and try to be that exact and we are short by $100 in this $30 million budget, we have to have a special town meeting and get people to come and approve that. So it seems to me irresponsible to try to cut it too close. So that's it. Last call, anything on budget before we move forward?
Patty, I heard you asking for our input. Did you get enough input on the warrant for now?
I think so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would it be too much to ask, sorry, I just thought of this. So you had asked if, if you wanted this cut sheet included in the next draft? So you had asked if, if you wanted this cut sheet included in the next draft of the budget.
Yeah.
I don't know if, if I want to go that far. Do you think Amber could throw in just like one line at the end, sort of like she did with this, to say, if we did, if we included the whole cut sheet, this is what the total would be in the percentage? Not adjust all the lines or anything, but just so we can see what the overall effect would be? Thank you.
She can play with that relatively easily, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah. It would be, it would be a lot more work to put everything in the individual lines, but a bottom line total, certainly, because she could do that.
Yeah, because, I mean, I guess last thoughts and then I started to belabor it, but looking at this, with the transfers trust everything, we're looking at 4%, that to me is a pretty reasonable number in a year where inflation has been 8, 9%. I'm, I'm sure that folks will disagree with me, but that number's not big and scary to me. So if we can get some of this stuff uncut, that would be great, but-
I think we're, you know, we're also being mindful of the collective bargaining agreement because the, the salary increases that would typically be in this aren't, and that would make it that much higher. So we're also trying to, you know, when we get to that number, you'll have a better idea too on the bottom line, because if you ratify the contract, that will be part of it too.
Okay, now last call. I won't say anything else about this. Okay, so we do have a whole bunch of policy items and we also have non-public to do and whatnot. So I would ask, are we ready to take fairly quick action on policy? Or do we want to save it until next time?
I did not sit down with Ashley to go through to make sure that these were as updated as they needed to be. So unless you're, there's a pressing need, I would rather have time. Are they good? Did you guys look at them?
Yeah, but I thought they were-
Yeah.
Yeah.
Were they updated enough?
I, I was pretty much-
Okay, I just didn't sit with her, so I want to make sure. Okay, good.
Oh, in the folder?
Oh, yeah, no, nothing, we didn't get any language changes from any board members, so we didn't change anything. Yeah. Sure.
Okay. So do we want to table those two and then if you guys think we're okay on the rest of them, we can take them as a block?
Which ones do you have issues with? Okay. And those were, those are the ones that, yeah, I was, I have no opinion on, really. So, not EBV, but EHAB. So I was going to kind of propose that in block, take the third reading excluding EHAB and EHBB. E, well, no, for me, it was going to be, EBV, that's fine. If you, we can table that one too. I get, I have no problems with that.
I'll leave it up to Melanie and Jean if we're, if we're, I mean, I've read through them, but like Melanie said, it's been, they've been hanging out there a while. But I'm okay, I'm okay moving forward with all but the two that Stacy wants to look closer at.
What I'm hearing is there's maybe three we should table.
The data ones and then EBV.
Oh, both data ones?
Yeah. Yeah. And EHBB. Yeah. Oh, because, right.
Yeah, I gave it to her, so maybe, maybe she didn't put the updated one in there. No, it maybe.
Yeah, so it probably didn't get updated then.
Okay. I think there was only one that had a couple of word changes from two meetings ago. Okay.
I'm making a list of them so I can read them properly. Well, that's a lot of Js.
Yeah, we probably should. I didn't even, I wasn't even thinking. I just was going through them.
Okay, so-
We should table them.
Just wait on all of them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, perfect.
Okay, sounds good. Yep, worked for me. Okay, so that brings us to our second public comment section of the evening, agenda item number 10. We've got another 15 minutes if there's anybody that wants to share anything. Seeing none. 11, and any informational items?
Yes. Amber put the updated enrollment tracking sheet in your drive for you to look at. Oh, and the infra, that's where I had the infrastructure grants to talk to you about, but we've already done that, so we're good.
Okay.
I just wanted to quickly let you all know, I'm going to need to attend the next meeting remotely. And in case you guys have the monitor going, I have a minor surgery thing on the day before, so I will have a bandage on my face. I have like a sinus thing. It's nothing worrisome, but, you know, not going to look great. And I will be looking forward to attending the meeting remotely.
The date, 12/20?
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's a song about that.
Okay.
About being on a rowboat that day.
I've done Dunkin' Donuts parking lot before.
I remember that.
Okay, so Jen, item number 12, the board has need to go into non-public session in accordance with New Hampshire RSA 91 dash A colon 3, Roman numeral 2, small letters A and C, small letter A is the dismissal promotion compensation or disciplining of an employee or the investigation of any charges against him or her, and small letter C is matters which if discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the board. On a roll call vote to enter non-public at 8:07 PM, Amy? Stacy? Melanie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So we'll take a minute, pause video, ask our friends to leave.